Yeah.
That's, I think that's right. That's the way I'd do it. In that way we're... March 12th will be our next safety meeting.
March 12th.
March 12th. I'll try to remember to say it. I'm gonna write it down.
Rich?
You got enough room down there?
Yeah.
Hold mine over if you need.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine.
How are you? I moved down just because John's not here.
Yeah, he's out too.
Should we scoot in?
Good. How are you?
It's up to you.
It's up to you. I can move one more. I don't have... I like being out of the corner. I'll be, I'll be you and you can be Andy.
I'll be able to see us this. I've got the safety, uh, safety meeting notes.
What?
It is.
Need a little.
Oh, I gotta sign my husband out. Get back in.
Did you get a copy? I, I can give her.
I saw, um, I mean, I saw the email.
Yeah. I brought, I brought.
Oh, it was written. Not to do this way. There.
Yep. Call to order. Everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of reflection.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a liberty, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kurt, can we have roll call, please? Here.
President.
Here.
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 All right. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from February 1st? Any corrections or concerns? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign. All right. This time I'd like to, is there a motion to exit, exit the meeting and enter into a public hearing?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay, this, uh, public hearings over ordinance 238-23. This is to amend the official zoning map to, uh, 216 East First Street, um, to change from a M1 to an R3. Is there anybody here who'd like to discuss that? Anybody up here? All right. Um, motion to exit public hearing and re-enter into regular meeting.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 All right, uh, there aren't any communication or announcements tonight. Um, audience concerns? All right, we'll start with Anita, please. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
What is the Constitution? The Constitution of the United States is a document that was created to lay down the groundwork for the government and how it should operate. It was written in 1787 in Philadelphia following the nation's Articles of Confederation. A chief aim of the Constitution drafted by the Convention was to create a government with enough power to act on a national level, but without so much power that fundamental rights would be at risk. This is a source from the whitehouse.gov site. During the Constitution's development, how each state would be represented in government was heavily debated. The Virginia Plan was proposed by delegate Edmund Randolph. The plan proposed a government made of three branches, including legislative, executive, and judicial. Representation was based on a state's population. William Patterson proposed the Jersey Plan, which would provide each state an equal vote in Congress. The plan angled towards every state receiving equal power, no matter what their size or their population. These plans led to what was called the Great Compromise, which created the House of Representatives, the legislative branch, based on population, and the Senate, also in the, in the Congress, where states would be represented equally by having a given number of votes per state. The Constitution was originally written in 1787, but shortly after it needed to be ratified by nine of the 13 states for it to be put into effect. In order to encourage the ratification of the Constitution, James Madison, Alexander Hamilton, and John Jay wrote the Federalist Papers, a collection of eighty-five essays published anonymously that outlined the need for the new government structure. The Constitution was then ratified in 1788 when nine states had approved the document, but it wasn't until 1790 that when the last of the original thirteen states, which was Rhode Island, gave its approval. So what are the main sections of the Constitution? It begins with the preamble, which we read last, last session, which summarizes the purpose of the document. I won't go ahead and read it again, but it begins with the wonderful words, "We, the people." The preamble is then followed by seven articles. The first three articles of the Constitution cover the three branches of government, the legislative, executive, and judicial branches. This was deliberate ordering by the, uh, members of the representatives to put the most important piece first, the legislative. If you'll notice, the first article, it is the longest and the most detailed. The second being the executive, which was also to have the, the power, but centered in one person. And then the judicial branch, which was to interpret the laws of the land as enacted by the Congress and the, signed off by the executive. The fourth article goes over the states and their relationships to the federal government, and the fifth details the amendment process. The sixth article covers debts, supremacy, and the oaths, and the last describes the ratification process. The Constitution has not remained the same since its publishing date in 1787. The first amendments to the document came with the addition of the Bill of Rights, which we read over a year ago. So the Bill of Rights includes the first ten amendments to the Constitution. These amendments were written by James Madison and highlight the rights of the American people. The following is a summary of the Bill of Rights. For First Amendment, freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom of the press, and freedom of assembly. You're all familiar with that one. Second Amendment, the right to bear arms. Third Amendment restricts the quartering of soldiers in private homes without the consent of the owner. The Fourth Amendment protects against unreasonable search and seizure. The Fifth Amendment, right to a jury trial, protects against double jeopardy or being punished twice for the same crime. The Sixth Amendment, the right to a speedy trial by an impartial jury. The Seventh Amendment guarantees a jury trial in cases that exceed a certain dollar amount. The Eighth Amendment prohibits excessive bails or fines, as well as cruel and unusual punishment for crimes. The Ninth Amendment addresses rights possessed by the people that are not specifically mentioned in the Constitution. And the Tenth Amendment, the powers that were not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited to it by the states are reserved to the states respectively, i.e. to the people. And since the beginning of the Constitution, twenty-seven amendments have been ratified. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Anita. All right, next up we have David Mars. State your name and address for the record, please.
David Mars, uh, 155 North Oak Street. Um, and I was, I'm a real estate investor in town and, um, own a few other properties around town and, um, many you're familiar with. I've done a fair amount of work downtown on investing in the downtown and, um, and in other parts of the city as well through, uh, rehabs and stuff like that. Um, I don't have a lot to say tonight. I just, um, it's been a minute since I came down here to yell at people about, um, the state of our downtown, but, um, no, I just wanted to come and, um, express gratitude to the new council for your, uh, willingness to serve at such an important time in, in London's, um, history. Um, you know, I've, I'm sure everyone here is aware of the growth that's, that is happening. Um, I know when, when I came here and started working, our downtown vacancy was around fifty percent. Um, and if you go try to find a vacant storefront in downtown right now, it's getting much, much more difficult. Um, within the next year, I would expect, you know, full occupancy in the downtown, which is really tremendous. Um, but as a business owner, you know, I know that, uh, growth is not always inherently good. Um, and that's certainly the tru, the case with, um, with, uh, with municipalities too, I'm sure. Um, so I just encourage council as we look towards the future and, and all the growth that's happening. Um, you know, there's, uh, revitalization happening downtown. You're aware of all of the building that's, um, you know, eminent, um, off towards the outer bar, or towards, uh, the freeway. Um, you know, just to think about what it is that makes London great, um, and makes it unique. One of the things that is offensive to me is when I talk to people about our downtown, and they say, "Yeah, you know, it's so cool to see this growth and all this revitalization." And they'll say, "Yeah, you'll, London's the next," and then they name some city that they think is great. Um, and I find that somewhat offensive. I mean, I, I appreciate the sentiment, but, um, but really, London needs to be London. Um, there, there's so much that is wonderful about our community. Um, there's so much connectedness and, um, and it's a, it's a broad statement to say so much community. But, um, I think, uh, what, it's important for us to really think about what that means and what it is that we care about in our community and, and reflect that in decisions that you'll be making, um, very soon. Um, so again, I just want to appreciate, uh, council and, um, I'm sure I'll be back as, as, uh, issues arise as we look towards the growth of London. So, thank you.
Thank you. Onto, uh, committee reports. We'll start with, uh, Greg.
Yes, sir. Personnel and Finance Committee did meet. We have a number of items that are gonna come before council tonight. We'll address those as they come. Hopefully everyone found it, um, useful for me to send, uh, a quick overview out just so everybody ha, kind of had an idea prior before coming tonight, what was gonna be on that agenda. I did mention in that email, um, and I'll mention it again, that I did ask for, um, supporting documents to be given to Finance Committee when considering spending money in future meetings. We didn't, uh, address that beforehand, so moving forward. Um, lack of documents may cause removal of an item from the agenda or tabling it until documents are received if the members of the committee feel that they need that information to move forward. So hopefully that all works out. I think it'll, it'll be helpful down the road for everyone. Otherwise, we'll address these things as they come tonight.
Brent? Do you have anything?
No. Michael's got the poke service.
Okay. Rich?
Okay, uh, had the, uh, public safety meeting on February 13th. Police chief's report was accepted, and I will give that report momentarily. Uh, fire chief's report was accepted. Council McDaniel's will give that report. Uh, we had some discussions on the following items. Uh, first one was looking into redrawing of the ward boundaries for the city of London. Didn't talk about it too much, but we are looking into it as the city grows. Some of the wards are getting excessively big, so may have to do something with that pretty soon. Um, new building and zoning permit fees, uh, to get London in line with other areas as far as fees are concerned. Uh, legislation on this item will be forthcoming to council. It was voted on and approved to come to council, probably the next meeting. We discussed updating codified ordinances to reflect the correct number of days to apply. All must be twenty-one days prior to the hearing date for a meeting. Uh, legislation on this item will also be forthcoming to council as it was voted on and approved to come to council. Uh, we also discussed assessing unpaid mowing fees from last year to the property owners that have not paid their mowing fees. Uh, we'll put that on their property taxes. And this is forthcoming legislation that will be coming to council. It was voted on and approved to come to council. Um, I'll give the police report, but next public safety meeting is March the 12th, 2024, 6:00 P.M. And in the conference room, right adjoining. Okay, um, police chiefs report, they've selected Xavier Manville, London, to fill one of three open officer positions. He will be hired and start his basic academy training at Clark State College in March. We still have two open positions, and we'll be requesting another testing sequence with the Civil Service Commission. The new Durango Cruisers will be in service this month as the equipment installation is completed. Uh, all of the AEDs were refreshed with new batteries and pads. Requesting funding through the Finance Committee for an unmarked vehicle to replace an older vehicle. Uh, the flock safety camera that was damaged in a hit skip crash last month should be repaired this week. Uh, assisted with the funeral traffic and parking for former Sheriff Saltzman who passed away last week. Uh, annual department summary report was completed in January. It was on your, online, if you had a chance to read it. Uh, thought it was a very good report. Uh, Sergeant Joe Cox graduated from the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Course on February 2nd. Uh, participated in the Safe Communities Coalition's Criminal Justice Outreach at Toll's Technical School with the students who are enrolled in the Criminal Justice Program. Couple of notable incidents. Uh, a seventeen-year-old student was struck in a crosswalk on Elm Street by a vehicle on her way to school. The student suffered minor injuries and was treated and released. The adult female driver was cited for FTY, which is failure to yield to a pedestrian in a crosswalk. A couple of notes on that. Uh, police department, uh, has written over, I believe, eighty citations out there since August. And the school has talked to the city about putting up a new street light going in there to kind of lighten that area up a little bit. On 29 of 24, officers located a vehicle after a flock safety camera alert to a vehicle with a stolen registration displayed. Officer stopped the vehicle on Elm near Park Avenue East, and as they confronted the driver, the suspect fled in the vehicle onto Park Avenue East through a residential yard at the dead end into Lafayette Street. Uh, suspect was pursued onto Interstate 70 to Interstate 270 southbound, where he crashed exiting onto West Broad Street. Suspect fled from the vehicle, and after a search by Columbus Air Unit and O S P units, he was not located. The vehicle was determined stolen as well, and a suspect was developed. Charges are pending after a complete investigation. My colleague will give fire department's report.
I have the report for activities and events and, uh, departmental EMS training, EMT refresher through Ohio Health. And departmental EMS training, vascular emergency, mass casualty incident, and then they did triage in February through Madison Health. And departmental fire training, pre-planning and hose move it, movement on Sovereign Village. And completed several CPR and fire safety classes. Completed annual Toys for Tots. Assisted in moving furniture at Masonic Temple Candy Cell. Began EMT refresher class, and it looks like Chief Eads and Lieutenant Lawhan attended Senior Officials Workshop for All Hazards. Preparedness from Texas A&amp;M Engineering and Extension Services at Becksees. Sounds like they're pretty busy, as I said.
All right. Shannon, do you have anything?
I don't.
Michael?
Uh, we had a public service committee meeting. Um, uh, our councilman hit was unable to be there, so it was just me and Councilman McDaniel's. Um, not a whole lot went on. We, we talked about the pickleball courts that are going to be put in if approved. Uh, we talked about the location. There were several given. Uh, we chose one, uh, and we're sending it back to Finance for it to be approved. Um, we also talked about the fireworks, um, for this year. Uh, the, the mayor brought the, um, the contract, and, uh, he's said that, uh, we needed to get on that because there's only so many firework places, and they're lining up to get that Fourth of July date, so we, we kind of need to put some post haste on that. We also talked about the parking situation downtown. Um, didn't really resolve anything, but we did have a pretty good discussion. Um, I, I think it's something, uh, it's, it's gonna have to be an ongoing discussion. We need, we need to get some public input, I think, um, on what exactly to do. I have reached out myself and talked to quite a few of the downtown businesses, but it, it's kind of, uh, we're kind of out of standstill because what one person thinks is a great idea, the other, the other people are, are no. Um, so that's, that's pretty much it, public service committee wise.
All right, thank you. On to city official reports. Mayor?
Thank you. Appreciate you guys coming out. David, I, I love what you said when you talked about people saying, you know, "Hey, we're, one day we're gonna be like whatever." We've always tried to shake that also and say, you know, "We're gonna be London. We're gonna build it the way that the citizens want it and, and become our own identity." So appreciate you saying that. On Friday, February 8th, a new website and app went live, um, so please take a look at the new website and download the app. Our website address is londonohio.gov, and you can download the app for your phone in your app store by searching City of London, Ohio. We are very proud of the new website and the app. Both turned out great, and this is just another tool to help keep citizens informed, to give them information at their fingertips. So I do want to thank, uh, our executive assistant, Eve Breedlove, because she was, uh, quite the spearhead on this and being able to get everything moved over and switched over and help build it and how it would look. So thank you to her. Uh, we are continuing to work through the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District Collaboration. Um, we have been meeting very frequently to make the transition as smooth as possible. So citizens will start to see more information go out. Um, there's actually something coming out in the utility bills itself. So if anyone has any questions about the transition, please feel free to reach out to the administration, administration's office. Talked about this last time I was here a little bit, but Susan Thompson with Massa County Board of D.D., we have received the, all the information and the award letter for this, uh, from the state for the sidewalk grant. So that funding obtained will facilitate the construction of three hundred and forty ADA accessible sidewalk ramps. Greatly enhance accessibility in the city. With these ramps to be installed throughout this, throughout all areas in the city, I think it is a powerful statement to our commitment to equal opportunities and just creating an environment where everyone can thrive. So, um, I'm very proud of the work that we did, and especially want to thank Susan Thompson with the Massa County Board of D.D. Uh, and also Eve for all her help with this. And so we, we will be meeting next week to go over the funding and start putting our timeline together on when we're gonna start looking at this. The Public Service Committee met this week, and part of that discussion was about local festivals. The London Strawberry Festival and the London Rhythm and Rib Fest are quickly approaching, and we want to have a city plan in place for those festivals. So there's always been talks about moving the festivals and possibly moving them to Cowling Park, or possibly remaining in the downtown area, or possibly this, or possibly that. So, um, we set up a time with Councilman, uh, Norman, and he's gonna come in. We're gonna kind of talk some things through, come up with some ideas, and then hopefully have some kind of interaction with the citizens, if that's to bring them in or do some kind of live video stream or something, to where people can get their voices heard on what they want to see, right? Do they want it downtown? Do they want it at Cowling Park? Do they want it set up this way? Do they want it set up that way? Um, also hear from employees of the city, business owners, citizens, um, festival volunteers. So just to try to get that figured out. So, um, I do want to take a second and thank some of our s, our local, state, and federal elected officials. Seems like I've had quite a few meetings lately, um, this past month with county officials. Went over to the State House and saw our state representative, Brian Stewart, and then had a representative from U.S. Congress, man Mike Carey's office, come in this week. So it's just nice that we're always in touch and talking to these people and collaborating, talking about funding, um, and just having that continued partnership and strengthening it. So I just want to thank them for that. Um, I would like to welcome a new business to downtown, uh, Neston Bloom. Just came to our beautiful historic downtown. They just had their ribbon cutting this past Saturday before, um, a very well-attended and great chocolate walk that they had down there. The Massa County Chamber of Commerce will be holding another ribbon cutting, which will be next week on Wednesday, February 21st at Sovereign Village. Now on to the fun fact, which is the number twenty-one and the number nineteen. So as we all know, there is a very important election approaching fast with a very important issue on the ballot. So early voting will begin next week on February 21st with the election being held on March 19th. So I just asked that everyone get out and have your voices heard and make sure we get out and vote. So, thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask the mayor a question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, on the, uh, on the grant for the, the, uh, the ramps for the, uh, the sidewalks, are we gonna do any kind of, like, companion? I guess a companion deal? Because putting in the ramps and then they lead to... Because putting in the ramps and then they lead to not-so-great sidewalks. Is that something that's also in the plan or in the works?
Well, this project is just for said ramps. So the funding, it has to be spent for the ramps, for what we applied for. Like I said, it was a grant through the state that was to benefit departments like the Board of D D. They were able to come up with a lot of different projects throughout the county. So that this is just for the ramps. Those discussions, you know, I know we've had those discussions quite a bit and, you know, keep having those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Rex, do you have anything? Move on to old business for the sixth reading. Is there a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, like I mentioned earlier tonight, this is to change the zoning from M one to R three. They're two sixteen east First Street. What are council's wishes?
Make a motion to adopt. I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right, ordinance two thirty-eight dash twenty-three has passed. Onto second reading. Could I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Basically, that's what it says here. Want to lease the land that we have at the city farm. Last I heard, there's two or three people that are interested in it. So I don't have anybody here from, Les is not here tonight, so.
We'll keep this on for third reading. Onto new business. Could I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
So when we set the budget in 2023, it considers transfers that need to be made. There is a list of transfers the auditor has supplied us. There's ten transfers to do many different things, including funding our pension funds for police and fire, building and zoning, paying for loans, including the one on this building, and some street department items that come up. And also the $200,000 that we had decided back in the budgetary process to forward or to give to the Fire Department this year to help them meet their expenses for the remainder of the year. The auditor does request that we have an emergency measure on this so that we can get this, she can get these things taken care of and get bills paid when they come due or at least appropriate the money so we know it's going to pay the bills. We don't have to argue about that later. So therefore, I move to suspend the three reading rule.
I thought it had to be six.
I'm sorry? Well, that is true. We will not be suspending the three reading.
That's right.
Okay, so.
Leave that on?
Resolution one oh four twenty-three, stay on. Could I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
So Bill Longan came and spoke to Finance Committee. Essentially, there haven't been any citywide road repairs other than some patchwork here and there since COVID. Kind of lockdown funding and where budgetary concerns were very, very real. He advocated for a million dollars in appropriations. The Finance Committee decided on a initial $500,000 and then an appropriation of an anticipated check from the county commissioners to reimburse the city for the demolition of the school building, totaling $461,000, I believe, which is falling just short of the street department's requested amount of a million dollars by proposing appropriations of $961,000 for the calendar year 2024.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to further clarify a little bit more, a million dollars obviously was kind of a ballpark amount. We did ask if there was going to be a list. The mayor indicated that he and Bill would work on grading the roads so that they can have a list to work off of on what has the greatest need for attention. And hopefully we'll have that at some point in the future that we can work off of.
Also, the auditor was present, did suggest to that this is just a matter of moving the funding that was already present within, from the general funds to the capital funds. She, that was still well within her surplus target. And then the additional $461,000 coming into the city would move to the capital fund as well.
Any other discussion on this? Next one, could I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Since Mr. Hitt's not here, I'll address this. The last year during a finance meeting, the Tax Department came to us and suggested that they would like to actually purchase a program that will allow people to make their payments online, look up their own documents, I believe, online. They expected that to be around $11,000 total that was purchasing that. And I think there was installation of that also. So we did remember to put that on the agenda. They brought that back. There was a very slight change. I don't know if it's reflected in this number. Rex, do you know it's not?
She sent an email, Greg, with the revised figures on it.
Right. I don't have that up yet, but she did send that.
Yeah, it's $11,143. And if I recall, the additional 500, no, with a support, I'm not sure if the e-pay module was an additional figure to that. We'll assume yes, so just shy of $12,000 necessary to get that program. This contract or this invoice is valid until April five of 2024. And that, if purchased, would be implemented sometime over the summertime, allow the Tax Department to become acquainted with it and should go live for 2024 tax year, I believe, when taxes come, tax forms come due in 2025 April.
So would you like to amend that number?
What was the number? I'm not sure there's a number in, in the resolution, so.
Well, when we look, when we look at the document, it says the total's $11,143 now. It does say that there could be $546 for an e-pay module. But if we use one of their pre-approved processors, I don't believe we would have to pay that.
Ah, that's right, that's right, that's right. So it would just be the 11,143. And I don't remember what the figure was she provided in the.
11,143 according to the email. That's the updated number. And on the, on the ordinance or the resolution, it's 11,103.
Oh, okay.
So I'll move that we just amend this number to 11,143.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, amendment has failed. No, it passed there. I'm sorry, it passed. Hello. Blah blah land there.
President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you were describing it, I don't know if you mentioned the program. I understood her saying is it's not just an online where you can go and pay the bill, but you can actually file your taxes through this program. Okay, I just want to make sure because I didn't get that from what you said. So it's basically an online filing system. And I think, man, I think that that'd be great to have.
So Resolution one oh six dash twenty-four amendment for 11,143 is passed. We'll go on to the next one. Could we get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
So there were informally requests for some price quotations for bringing in some more filter and grading, reseating of the vacant lot where the school stood. The prior company, I think, ended up bailing before the job was completed. The, so two landscaping companies were approached to provide some idea of where the cost would be. Allscapes bid came in at $40,600. Madison Lawn Care came at $198,690 and eleven cents. Due to the really vast discrepancy between the two of those and the Allscapes bid coming in below the contract amount requiring council approval, the proposal was simply to accept that proposal as a request for appropriation in that amount in order to move forward with the stated filter grading and reseating. Oh, and, and the original company will be subject to a lawsuit by the law director because they were responsible for, for the filter and the grading and the reseating. And so there's a possibility that some, if not all of that money, could be recouped by the appropriate lawsuit on a later date. Mr. Councilman Hitt proposed, I believe, the sum of $45,000 to make sure that we're covering any additional expenditures and also that received a second. So the amount contained in this resolution would be $45,000 for appropriations to the lot where the community center previously stood.
Were those two contractors, were they bidding on or quoting the same thing?
So, so we told them exactly what we wanted done. They asked some questions or whatever. And so when the second one came in, I, one of the issues was one person gave an itemized detail, right? This much dirt, this many trucks, this much labor. And the other one just wrote a paragraph kind of what they would do. So I told the second company, I said, hey, do you have the itemized, right? Because then we can go apples to apples. Maybe they had four times as much dirt. They thought it was a bigger, you know, I don't know. And I never received that, so. But I did, I did speak to both people who bid it out after both came in. And it was public record.
Also, I'll just point, I'll add, there was the possibility, Mr. Councilman Norman did inquire about the possibility of utilizing some of the excess dirt that's likely to come from the North Main Street water project that might even reduce the cost further. But out of an abundance of caution, the proposal is to keep the request for appropriations at $45,000. Also, I don't think we have quorum to suspend three readings on this one, but there was a request to place this in as an emergency to go into immediate effect because of the likelihood that neither company would be able to dedicate as much time once they get it full into the spring and summer season.
Anyone else?
No.
How much was that second bid, 198,000 some?
198,691 is what my notes suggest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
So the police chief had asked for the replacement of an unmarked vehicle, mostly used by his detective, from what, how I understand that. He believes that will be $45,000 or less. We did have a discussion. It seems like everybody on finance was okay with this because the vehicle had so many, 160,000 miles or more on it. So it just seemed like it should be in the rotation to replace it at that point.
All right, we'll move on to the next one. Could I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
So yeah, this is, I brought this to kind of do two things, to free up our safety service director and our mayor to be able to, when these grants come across their desk, they can immediately apply for them instead of having to wait and come to us because of the deadlines in some of them. The other, the other big one for me was, you know, it's a, it's a way to cut down on some of the emergency measures that we have. So that's why I brought it. And that's pretty much it.
Just one addition to that, this is apply only, not accept.
Right, it is. It's apply only if, if, you know.
They can apply for grants that they feel are necessary. It'll be up to council to accept them later.
Yes, correct, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to roundtable. Michael, I'll start with you.
The mayor mentioned that we are, we did have a discussion about moving the festivals or not moving the festivals. And we are going to have a meeting later on during this month. And then what we hope to do is have some, some type of public forum where the business owners, the festival organizers and just the public can come and speak how they feel it should be done also. So we are, we are going to do that. I'll be hosting a meeting on the twentieth at 5:30 at the Public Library in the meeting room downstairs. The Fire Department, members of the Fire Department will be there to kind of educate the public on some of the services they have. And then if the public has any questions, they'll be free to answer those questions also. So I invite everybody out to that. I appreciate everybody who came out tonight. Mr. Mars, I think you're one of the hardest. Mr. Mars, I think you're one of the hardest working men in town. I, I doordash a lot and I say that a lot, but I'm out all hours and I, I don't think I'm ever been out and not seen you somewhere working, doing something. And that's, that's not just hard work, that's commitment and that's dedication. And, you know, when I, to, when I think of London, I think of Dave Mars too, because, you know, you really are changing the face of London and I appreciate what you do. Other than that, I hope everybody stays healthy and I see you back at the next meeting.
Shannon?
With, uh, Dave here, and I think we've had this, um, conversation informally maybe with, uh, uh, Councilman Eads. There's been some question as to whether the city should engage in some sort of strategic city planning, um, before a lot of the properties that are currently for sale, especially as to, pertains to the 42 corridor, um, are actually transferred and subject to, you know, whatever the design wishes are of, of whatever the developers have in mind. It's really just more of a talking point than an actual proposal, but, um, you know, to have some sort of, maybe roadmap going forward about what the, this, how the city should look instead of just leaving it to chance, that, um, developers are gonna propose, um, building things that are conducive, that are, um, that, uh, that work in concert, that don't cause congestion, that don't, um, don't put stressors where stressors aren't necessary, especially as it comes to, you know, the existing infrastructure with the lights and the, uh, traffic capacity and, and all that kind of stuff. So I think there's, we've agreed informally maybe to start surfing out and, and look for, um, how much it would, entail to have a city planner, um, even just make a sort of a global, um, suggestion, um, as to how we could move forward so that there's a little bit more of, um, I don't know, a plan mo- going forward instead of, um, just, you know, leaving everything to chance. Is there, you're pulling your mic like you got something to say, yeah?
If you're finished, I, I, no, I, I think you're absolutely correct. I think we need to get our comprehensive plan updated, which that would be kind of the, like you said, a map of where we're going and what things are looking like. It's a, a very intense thing to do. I know the past administration tried to update it and it was, you know, it was very intense and, and, um, so we have actually been thinking about this for probably about, well, we've been thinking about it forever, but we started to really get involved and talk to some companies. The county just had theirs updated. So we talked to their company that did that because we know that some of the information that they already have could go towards our comp plan because a lot of it is information getting population, you know, how things look, projections, all these things. So I just, actually just told Rex that we will send out the estimates that we, um, went out and received for a company to come in and do a comprehensive plan. And we'll send that to all the council and, but we, it's not cheap. It's not cheap, but it's, it's needed. It is definitely needed. And I don't think it's, it's something that we can do on our own right now at the pace we're moving and, um, where we're at economically. So, but great suggestion. So we'll send those to you guys. You guys take a look at them, but we'll, we'd need to get legislation to pay for it to be able to get somebody in here to do a comp plan.
Very good, thank you.
Rich?
I'd like to thank all city employees for their work and their efforts on behalf of the city. Last week, we lost a, a good friend. He was sheriff here for many, many years. Died kind of suddenly, um, and is a good friend of mine. And, uh, I'd like, if we could, I'd just like to take him and take a moment and have a moment of silence for Sheriff Steve Saltzman. Thank you.
Brent?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Stay safe out there.
Greg?
A few things that have come up. Part of the discussion tonight that Shannon brought up a few minutes ago. So I was on the codified ordinances. So I'd asked the clerk to try to track down maybe an impossible thing to find. And just to state what it says, Clerk Miller, I'm requesting the comprehensive development plan, which was resolution two two three dash nine three, and the development plan for the downtown district was, which was one nine five dash nine seven. As cited in the London codified ordinances, I did copy the language in which it says that, uh, these resolutions may be obtained at cost from the clerk of council. I realize these are old, old documents, but I'm still being arrested. Don't know if you've had any luck because they're so old. Okay, well, maybe, maybe one day we'll get a chance to look at those. I know they're old and they're probably way outdated, but at least there is a document that was supposed to be out there for both of these things. Also, on the, the city website, I still think it's a little bit of, um, a work in progress, the new website. I did look around quite a bit on things and it made me remember something I was going to ask the, uh, the, the mayor. Boards and commissions, well, maybe I'm going to ask him to make a comment. Boards and commissions, we have a number of people on boards and commissions that are listed on the website, which have no phone or email in order to contact them. I really think that should be a requirement if you're going to serve on a board or a commission, that there should be a way to contact you, even if you're just a member and not the chairman. We're required to do that. I think they should be required to also. Also, I believe there's a number of openings right now, civil service, maybe metro housing. I'm not sure how many serve on that. And the planning commission, I believe, is a number sh- a number short. Is that, is that still true?
So we just had a resignation for civil service. They will ser- just got it yesterday. They will serve, uh, they served yesterday, they'll serve next month. And then, yes, I am still needing to get someone.
So you have two openings on civil service at that point? There's only two listed on the website.
Okay.
So if there's a third one, I'm not aware of who that is. And then it looks like the planning commission is still one short?
Yes, sir.
Are you actively asking people of the community if they'd like to help serve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And also, it made me also think then along the lines of, this came out of our discussion with the law director the other night. Is the retention schedule posted anywhere? I know a lot of communities, they put their retention schedule on what records are retained for what length of time and it's very specific on their records. I don't know that I've ever seen a published retention schedule for the city of London. So this, that's just a, a thought. And then last night, I was approached by a member of the community. She's going to contact you, Mr. Mayor. Her idea is she would like to publish a local business directory that would include all of the new businesses, which is, since we no longer have a newspaper or a phone book, that she would like to put something out there. She wants to know how that would be possible to do that. I gave her a couple of suggestions, including, um, cultivate, uh, as a possible resource. And then also, she did want to reach out to you. Or she may want to come to council to see how that could possibly be funded. She doesn't want to make any money. She has volunteers to do it. She just thinks it would be beneficial to all of the businesses in London, not just the downtown area, to have a new, uh, directory out there. Thank you.
All right, we covered a lot tonight. So next meeting, there'll be quite a bit on there as well. I'd like to thank Anita and David for coming out tonight. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
For as much as that was, it would be an hour, that's great.
I did, you know what? I did, uh, what was that?
I, I, I took mine and gave it back because I didn't, I didn't like it. And I, I was, I had to, uh, had to factory reset in a week my HP. I need to hear it too hard. Yeah. Yeah, and I have one of those too, but I, I, I'm an HP guy.
You know, you're the best dressed guy on here. Every meeting you pitch, you're the best dressed person on there.
Mike? Mike? Can I have your sec?